Really broken in.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting order. Thank you everyone for your attention. Before the first item on the agenda, I thought I should mention for the benefit of people on council and in the community, we did have a cybersecurity incident starting Sunday night at City of Bella Vista. So many of the employees are working from home today and will be tomorrow. Our IT department is investigating, and also outside consultants. And there's a public statement about it, press releases from put out by Cassie Lapp. So our first item on the agenda is the mid-project update on the Development Code Reform and Planning Manager Robertson and Friesen Nichols.
Go ahead and switch this over, we have a nice, non-internet meeting presentation for you guys. But here tonight, we have Dawn and Jake from Friesen Nichols. It's been halfway through this project that we started last fall. We're still on track to be finished with our zoning and development code reform update in early 2025, aiming for late winter, early spring still. We are currently in two phases, or I guess it's two A technically. We just wrapped up technical review of our zoning and development code, which that's what they're going to talk about in their meat and potatoes presentation they have for you. And we are starting to look at Chapter 107, which are subdivision and development code requirements. Other than that, I will turn it over to Dawn and Jake.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Thank you so much for having us back. We're going to tag team this just a little bit, so let Jake get us started. And we will definitely have plenty of space for you guys to ask questions as we get to the end of the presentation. So, there you go.
Well, yes, we're very excited to give you guys a rundown of what we've been up to and where we're at and where we're going. So for those of you who may not have met us, I'm Jake Lane, one of the project planners with Friesen Nichols, and Dawn is the project manager for your Development Code Reform. So, just to give you kind of a clearer picture of what we're going to be talking about, we're going to spend a second kind of jogging everybody's memory on the diagnostic process we did and what that report yielded and sort of how that informed the process of creating Chapter 109 and will inform Chapter 107. We'll spend just a second explaining the organization of the zoning chapter, just so it's clear how the information is contained and flows together. And then we'll actually do a summary of all of the content within the draft of Chapter 109 that we provided to the city, before talking about next steps, kind of the timeline of the project, and then opening up for discussion and questions. So, talking about the diagnostic report, the process that we used to create this started by looking at the adopted plans and policies like Bella Vista 2040, as well as some of the bike pedestrian master plans and that sort of thing, analyzing their priorities and recommendations. Before talking with the public and stakeholders, the public was largely engaged through the project website. We had a lot of good survey responses on there. And then we had a series of stakeholder meetings back in early October of last year, you may recall. So we used those conversations, which also included local experts, agencies, like the Arkansas Department of Health and folks with the utilities in the area, to ultimately figure out what the necessary code changes were going to be, figure out where the gaps were between what the city wanted to achieve and how it wanted to develop, and what the current code would allow for. So kind of the key themes that we extracted from that engagement process, if you've read the diagnostic, you may recognize these icons and these themes. But entanglement refers to just kind of a complicated web of city regulations, POA, ACC regulations, people not being sure what's allowed and what isn't in certain places. Water management principally refers to stormwater management. We heard a lot of stakeholders mention that as they tried to do development projects, do something on their property, the existing stormwater regulations were both burdensome, but also not super effective at actually mitigating the negative impacts of stormwater. Septic systems came up from a lot of different perspectives, both from a new development perspective in the way that they inhibit capacity for growth where it may be wanted, but also from the perspective of septic systems being installed and then not really being to the capacity the home ends up, you know, needing to fill, and that posing both a human and environmental health hazard, as well as kind of the land use administration and components of that with people having their septic systems on a separate lot from their actual dwelling unit. So zoning and land use is kind of a subset of entanglement. Specifically within the zoning chapter, we heard a lot of confusion about what people are allowed to do on their property. Again, kind of going back to the city allows certain things, other entities don't allow certain things. So just kind of mitigating that is a big part of what we wanted to do. And then development constraints is something that kind of emerges from all of these other issues, where people found it to be a somewhat challenging environment to promote growth or variety of different types of development. They sort of struggled to achieve the variety they may have wanted to. And then the last thing we heard from stakeholders that we found important was staff flexibility and coordination. When you've got a city that's this close to build-out, it's got the kind of topography that Bella Vista has, it has this unusual governance structure. It's ultimately going to result in some unusual situations where people may have to figure out how they can develop their property. And when those situations arose, we heard from a lot of stakeholders that the existing regulatory environment was very black and white, very rigid, and didn't allow staff some of the flexibility they might need to just resolve those issues administratively as opposed to going before a hearing process where really it may not be necessary or warranted. So the objectives that came out of that were to expand the housing stock in the community. We know that there's kind of a fine line to walk with this one. We heard a lot of different opinions about what sorts of housing we want to see, so we have to be very careful in our approach there. But that was an objective that emerged from those conversations. At the same time, preserving open space and recreational opportunities, so both the natural character of the community, as well as those quality of life amenities like the golf courses and lakes that are so attractive to so many of the existing residents. Additionally, promoting economic vitality through both mixed-use and infill development. Mixed-use development is kind of understood as the common best practice in planning today, moving away from Euclidean and hyper-segregated zoning. So that's sort of broadly moving in that direction, is going to be good. And infill will be especially important in Bella Vista, again, because it's sort of so close to being Giltow. Recognizing those small gaps that we can fill in, or opportunities for redevelopment of already-developed areas, that's going to be sort of crucial to the future of development in Bella Vista. So we want to make sure we have an intelligent approach to handle that. Improving connectivity for all modes of transit. We certainly want to make sure that pedestrians can get where they need to go, that we want to leverage the existing infrastructure and culture of cycling in the area. And we also want to make sure roads are designed and located to ensure convenient and safe travel for vehicles. And then finally, providing clarity for property owners, staff, the public, and governing entities, making sure that the processes and the steps that you need to go through to get something done in Bella Vista are clear if you're a developer or a property owner, and that it's easy to administer for staff and easy to understand and administer for the elected bodies. So we'll take just a second to talk about the organization as well. It's pretty intuitive, but those are the nine articles that Chapter 109 is divided into, so we'll walk through those in a second here. Articles are the largest unit of information within each chapter. And then each of those articles may be divided into divisions. In this case, if you look at zoning districts, there are three divisions. One that introduces it, one that captures all of its residential uses, or pardon me, residential districts, and then one that captures all of its non-residential districts. And then each of those divisions is divided into sections. And in this case, for Article 2 there, each zoning district has its own section that contains all the information about that district standard. So that's just to kind of give you a sense of how this information is contained and relates to one another. And I think that's a great opportunity to hand it off to Dawn for to cover the content.
Okay, so with that overview, we'll start talking more about what the new draft looks like for Chapter 109. And so as Jake mentioned, the articles begin with this general provisions article. And this one's super not so sexy, not so interesting, but very important because this is where it substantiates how you have the authority to establish your regulatory structure, your zoning, and how that then translates into the applicability of these regulations and basically how they function as a part of your municipal code. Then getting into the more interesting stuff, we start looking at Article 2, where we talk about zoning districts. And so this introduces 12 zoning districts. You currently have 16 on the books, so we are proposing to consolidate and reorganize a little bit to better address what your needs are moving forward. There is an equivalency table within, and I'm actually going to show you that in just a second to talk a little bit more about how that translates from current conditions to propose. Each district, as Jake mentioned, kind of has its own section. It also introduces like its own applicability statement, and then the set of regulations that are applicable to that particular district, the dimensional requirements and that type of thing. So these are the zoning districts. This is what the equivalency table looks like, and so...
Hey Dawn.
Yeah?
Could you aim a little bit more towards that microphone?
Oh, yeah. I could stand.
I was saying, you don't have to stand right close.
How about this?
There we go.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right, so this is basically comparing previous means, your existing conditions. And applicable is what we are proposing within the update. So you'll see in here, there are a few zoning districts. For instance, R2 and Special Residential that we proposed to combine into what we would call Moderate Density Residential. Likewise, in your C3 and C4 districts, oh, sorry, where am I here? Jason, you can be my pointer, that might be more effective from this pointer. C3 and C4 get combined. And basically, in our evaluation of your zoning districts, what we tried to do is identify the districts that were not being heavily utilized, and understand why. In a lot of cases, it's because you had a couple of districts that were very, very similar and allowed almost the same types of uses and permissions. And so combining those into single districts seemed to make good sense. Other things that we looked at in this particular situation, again, the purpose of doing that was to streamline. So commercial and industrial districts are also a little bit more streamlined than what you currently see in your regulations. And again, for the most part, we're really trying to work with what we've got, but to ensure that this is just starting to move the city into a direction of being a little bit more flexible where appropriate, particularly in residential districts, but also, you know, where you have these very similar districts, whether they are industrial or commercial, that are basically pointing to and allowing the same sets of uses that we're willing to strip that out and make it more clear that in certain districts, you know, a very specific set of uses and permissions is established. Once the districts were provided, we really started to focus on uses. And so the uses are divided, of course, into a group of general descriptions, so residential uses, or industrial uses, commercial uses. And I'll show you a little bit of a glimpse at the use table here in a moment. But what this section, or this article called "uses" does, is it introduces the establishment of your entire table of permitted uses and how those relate to the various zoning districts. It also includes a section on specific uses that are applicable to, only to specific, excuse me, specific regulations that are only applicable to certain uses. So you'll see in here, there are, after all of the different types of uses, there is an approval procedure for identifying where a use fits within the use table. There are use-specific regulations, and there are accessory regulations, and there are temporary regulations, all kind of connected to that use table or that use section of Chapter 109. The use table is kind of a catch-all. It provides on the far left, all of the different uses. They're broken up into different categories. In this case, you're seeing kind of the top of the commercial, or section of the commercial uses. All of the zoning districts run across the, across the top of the table to, from left to right. You start with your lowest intensity uses, your preservation and low-intensity residential uses, all the way over to your industrial and plant zoning district uses on the further right in your very colorful chart here. And then in this column, it's called "use-specific standards." If there are use-specific standards, for instance, these that are associated with outdoor, let me make sure I'm reading the right thing, outdoor, mobile, or temporary vending, you've got a reference, and this is a hyperlink within the document that takes you to a separate section that identifies the specific criteria that are applicable to that particular use where it is allowed. And so it may be permitted by right, which is showing up as a P in your chart, or it may be permitted as a conditional use, which shows up as a C. But either one of those situations, you would have these applicable additional standards that are unique to that particular use. So that's the way that the table reads. Parking ratios are coming, they are not all in there just yet. When we talk about things that are use-specific, and that's just kind of elaborating on what we talked about previously, those may be things like additional buffers or additional landscaping. It could be hours of operation. It depends upon the particular use, but this is where we capture those particular criteria and establish them. So those are the use-specific regulations. Again, we have this table divided up into kind of your traditional everyday uses, as well as those that are accessory or temporary. So the accessory uses are provided, and those may have some additional criteria, such as, as mentioned here, nuisance issues, a lot of times, things like drive-ins or gas pumps. We tend to identify those as accessories to a particular use. So for instance, you could have a restaurant that has a drive-in or a restaurant that does not. And those are going to be allowed or preferred in different locations. And so we look at the thing, like the drive-in, as an accessory to a restaurant that may be permitted in certain locations with certain conditions. The temporary regulations are divided into three sections, and they're really based upon the duration of the activity. So 1 to 15 days, 16 to 30, or 30 to 90, as the time period that those temporary uses may operate. And so these are different, and this identifies different performance standards related to type A B or C temporary uses, and captures that in one place. Development standards, unlike use-specific standards, development standards are universally applied. So they're required regardless of what the particular use is. And these are going to be things like parking, and screening, and outdoor lighting that are applicable across the board for any type of development. And so there is a section, or a division, I guess is the right, the organizational structure, that addresses each one of these particular development standards. And they, there's a purpose statement, it gives a little bit of description of why would we have architectural design standards, why would we, you know, have signs, and the purpose for them with regard to kind of their place in the code. And so each one of these then goes through, and I don't have every one of them for you, but just the highlights. So for instance, outdoor lighting, ensuring that any outdoor lighting that is provided is sort of meaning best practices, that's pointed downward and away from adjacent properties to prevent as much light pollution and light trespass as possible, and some acceptable different types of lighting features or fixtures that would be allowed. Design standards, these are going to apply to typically, well, non-single-family residential, but these are ways to promote visual interest, but to also ensure that we're getting the type of design and the interest of design that we want to see within the city. One thing that we are also looking at are just ways to ensure that we're utilizing a palette of materials and colors that are complementary to and responsive to the character of development within Bella Vista.
You are aware of our restriction on residential design standards?
Yes, hands-off residential.
There's a picture of a nice house there along the way, I just want to make sure.
We're going to assume that they are using that as a office or some type of residential use, is that better? No, you're absolutely right. The state has precluded us from putting requirements on single-family residential. So other notable standards, the signs, signs are an important section. We really wanted to modernize and improve the sign standards within your Chapter 109, and ensure that we're also looking at signs from a content-neutral position, which makes sure that we're more in keeping with First Amendment and Supreme Court precedent cases, or directives, I guess. So that's been a bit of an overhaul. We're still also, we're looking a little bit closer at steep slopes. We don't think we have the combination exactly right yet on how we're regulating or proposing to regulate development on steep slopes as a part of that development standards section. Because you guys have very steep slopes. And so most of the examples that we've looked at are looking at things that are less steep and less impactful. But we need Bella Vista to be able to develop, but we also want to make sure that you're not, you know, seeing development slide down the hillsides. So that's, that's still got a little bit of work to be done. But the whole point of that, though, is to ensure that people who have properties that are sloped steeply have some ability to develop those properties and understand that where necessary, there are some accommodations. The infill development, we also want to make sure that, like Jake said earlier, where there are existing vacant lots in areas that are already developed, that infill can occur and have the same type of character and same type of development attributes of those things that are already existing. So oftentimes, we find in communities that are largely developed, or in areas of communities that are largely developed, they developed over, you know, decades, and those missing lots, those missing teeth, and within a block face, for instance, it's really important that what comes in there kind of fits and doesn't look really completely different from what's happening around it, just as far as building positioning, and massing, and scale of the structures. So the infill standards definitely are designed to help to mitigate those types of, those types of impacts that could be negative for infill-type development. But also to make sure that those lots are really usable and can fit into the neighborhood as they do tend to develop. As we look at procedures within the chapter, we'll have a similar setup within Chapter 107 when we look at the subdivisions. But we tend to try and put as much as we can into tables. And so what you see here is that there are different application types, all of the different types of applications that kind of fall under zoning, the development applications that would fall under the zoning section of your code. And whether or not a pre-application conference is necessary, whether notice is required, and what type of notice is required for that type of development application. And then who has the approval authority to act on, or review, or provide a recommendation on each of those application types. So trying to capture that as much as possible in a single glance is what you're looking at there. The other part of, well, another part of the procedures section that we've tried to accommodate with each of the different types of development applications, we've identified a flow chart that kind of start to finish tells you what the steps are and what the different decision-making processes look like for each of the development applications. There is, of course, a section on non-conformities. We don't necessarily aim to create new non-conformities, but it is inevitable within any type of regulatory structure. There could be non-conformities, so we've identified procedures related to non-conforming uses, structures, lots, signs, and site improvements. So the staff and property owners have a clear understanding of how to address those things. If there's someone who comes to the staff and wants to make a modification to a structure that's deemed to be non-conforming, this will give them the guidance to say there are certain things you can do and certain things you cannot do. Typically, and generally, within the response is, you cannot make a non-conformity worse than what it currently is. You can certainly reduce a non-conformity or eliminate it, that's the preference. So that's what we're trying to do, is to eliminate, is to move people out of a non-conforming status as much as possible and give them options to do that. Always processes and procedures for enforcing the regulations, and who is responsible for what. So this, the administration section, or, excuse me, article, this goes through the different decision-making bodies within the city and identifies kind of what their role is in the development process. And then in the new Chapter 109, what you'll see are sections, and I guess you currently have a section about use types and about general terms. We just basically reset that and make sure that all of the, all of the terms that are used are listed in the definitions, and they are hyperlinked where appropriate, where possible. So trying to make that as useful as it can be. As we move forward, so we're at, I can take this. We've done the diagnostic, we're in the midst of Phase 2, developing the updates. The Chapter 109 was always going to be the heavy lift. It's got more meat and potatoes to it than the subdivision regulations. Subdivisions are much more practical. Zoning regulations seem to be more of an art, and subdivisions a little bit more of a science. But we're moving into the subdivision regulations now. And through the fall, and through probably into the mid-fall of this year, we'll be working with staff to make modifications to Chapter 109 and also present them, Draft 107, so that they can then chew on that and give us a whole laundry list of questions and comments and recommendations on that as well. The goal, of course, then, is to get to the zoning map. Once we've, we can really move into the map at this point in time. We're ready to do that now that we've got zoning districts established and we've got purpose statements for each of them. We can work on the map as well as the subdivision. We can work on the map as well as the subdivision regulations, basically, as we move forward into the next couple of months and then have all of these things packaged and ready for you guys to start really making some decisions about as we get into the very early, hopefully, weeks and days of 2025. We're still aiming for February as a delivery date for you all to have the information to move it through your adoption process. This is a lot of information, we know that it's going to take you all a little bit of time to work your way through it, but your staff is doing a fabulous job because they are scrubbing this thing and sending us hundreds of comments. So we've, we've had a couple of long conversations about, you know, what does this mean and what does that mean, and we've got questions here, and they've been really productive. So we're going to keep doing that and work our way through these sets of revisions and kind of keep doing the same process as we get into the subdivision regulations. But that is the overview of where we are and, yeah. So, we have, I think, have we posted this to the website?
This presentation is available on the website.
Presentation is on the website because we know that's a lot of information as well. But I think we are getting through a round of revisions based upon staff comments with chapter 109 before we post that chapter to the website for everyone to have a draft available to review.
First question.
Yes.
Is it time?
It is time.
So, I think the last part is code adoption, so you'll go ahead and kind of go through everything, recommend, you know, the different zoning, I guess recommend the actual map, right?
Yep.
And then we'll go like the code adoption, so the first step will be through the planning commission.
Correct.
And they will review it.
Right.
At that time, so I, I just saw a page and, and I don't know if it's, it's just an example or if you pulled it out of what you know you're going to recommend. So you have CR, C1, C2, and I believe you're still C3, right?
Yeah, that's right.
So CR is what, commercial?
Retail.
Commercial.
Commercial.
Oh, commercial recreation, yeah.
Okay, well, and I noticed in that, I believe it had restaurant and, was it liquor sales or bar, I believe?
Okay.
When you get to that page.
And do note that this-
So, retail, the first column here is your CR, and it does have restaurant and retail, both.
Okay, okay, so, so that CR, so outdoor, mobile, or temporary vending is a conditional.
Correct.
And then restaurant is permitted and tavern or bar is permitted.
Correct.
Can I, can I actually interrupt to say that the, the use table is still kind of under revision?
Okay, that's fine.
One of the big comments we had was trying to move toward a little bit fewer conditional use permits in some cases, so, in that, in that particular instance, that's even one that we had updated in this.
I just wondered because I didn't know if that was going to be a recommendation. I'm not here to make it today. I know it has to go through and people are going to have to talk about it, right? But that, that right there was, has been one of my concerns in prior zoning requests.
Okay.
Because, you know, we just did one, and you know what, the name of the streets I don't know, but over by Vatican East and Vatican West, right, that, that piece of property on the corner right across from church.
Yeah.
Well, i- i- to me, I, I saw no issue in doing like AC1, but if I am the people living behind and it doesn't really seem appropriate to me, when you say a restaurant, I don't know if that includes like being able to drive through.
Right.
Like a Sonic or like a tavern or bar, which is, it's like I can do like some type of the transitional C1, but not, because I can understand. You got neighborhood right behind you, you got a church right across the street. So, I'm just saying, I look at that and I'm like, that's, that needs to be more.
Nuanced.
Transition or something.
Can I, sorry, can I mention two?
We're not making this decision.
No, no, it's okay. Just to, just to mention two things that might play into your thinking there. One is not only might there be a use-specific standard for a tavern or bar in that district that might help, but we also have a specific section within the use-specific standards that's residential adjacency standards. So, it helps that anytime there's a non-residential use that's going to be a budding or adjacent to a residential use, it gets some, even some extra buffering or extra screening, really to help make that transition more cohesive where that might happen, but anyway.
And you understand that, I might understand that, that people who live right there don't understand that, that's what they see.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm going to let it go, but I just wondered, so we will have a chance to put our eyes on it.
Oh, yeah.
After the planning commission does, and then we'll have our head at it.
Absolutely. Planning, same process as an ordinance adoption, planning commission will present you a recommendation and you guys will have at it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We will also, we didn't mention this really in our presentation, but there will be public input sessions before we even have the official public hearing.
Yeah.
There will be informal come grab information from planning staff and Frees and Nichols a few times before we take it to planning commission. So it won't be, here's the first unveiling at the public hearing at all. We will, the internet, the website, the project website and public input sessions, people are going to see this before it gets to official.
Yeah.
That is part of that last adoption process setup. That'll happen here.
May I ask you a structure question?
Yeah.
It looks like we're not approaching this, or at least we're not using the phrasing of a unified development code.
Correct.
Is that intentional or is that where we're named up? Or are we basically sort of on our current structure or what, what's the thinking on that?
So, we packaged this as two separate chapters, basically because that was the way it was kind of presented through the RFP and contracting process. We are not so far into this that it couldn't be modified as a unified development code. There are some benefits to shifting to, and what a unified development code does is it basically takes chapters 107 and 109 and creates one single document and pulls all of the regulatory items relative to development into a single document. It would slim down some of the procedures because we would be able to put all of the approval authorities, for instance, for all different application types, whether it's subdivision-related or zoning-related, into a single space within the code to provide guidance on that. So, and, you know, definitions, just have to have one set of definitions that combine everything together. So the front-end piece and some of the procedures and those types of things definitely, it may become easier.
I should, we're talking about 107 to 109, is 108 stormwater, what is 108? Stormwater?
We don't have 108, we have 103, 105, 107, 109.
Oh, okay, we left spaces in front.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll stay over here.
All right. Okay. All right, I was just thinking about the structure. I'm being technical, that goes beyond what other people are going to be concerned about.
I would just say, let's make that decision sooner rather than later.
I, it's not my decision, Mike, I was just curious how we.
Okay.
Well, just to echo what Doug was talking about, when this started, I would have preferred to see even a further breakdown of commercial zoning, I mean, even like up to five, because of ambiguity, once you start combining that zoning, the concern that I have is that a project comes in, everybody figures out what it's going to be, and then it stalls out and then it gets sold, and then the zoning's in place for it to be just something totally different. So, those are the kind of problems that I've run into in the past, having lived in Fayetteville and do a planning commission there. You know, you see, you know, everybody gets amped up about something that's proposed.
Right.
And then that project gets sold and then it comes back as something not what was anticipated.
So your concern is that there are fewer not more?
Well, and that's what I mean, is that if there's ambiguity to it, to where, you know, a developer can say, well, you didn't, it, it doesn't say I can't. That puts us as a group, as a commission, as a council, whatever, it puts us in a very strange place where that's, that's when the pitchforks and everything else come out because nobody really knows exactly what, what's allowed or something like that, and that's the only concern that I have. I mean, I don't question your ability or, you know, the, all the hard work that you guys put into this, but that's the one thing that concerns me, just like industrial. You know, I've worked in industrial settings basically my entire career. And once you start combining that and it's the same scenario, is that those industrial settings, you can have some that are light duty.
Yep.
And some that are just, I mean, polar opposite. And, and then the next thing you know, you've got something going on and, and I know those are typically in county or more rural, you know, to the outskirts of the city limits, but I, I just, I'm very, I'm not hesitant, but I'm, I'm curious to see how you guys put that together because I'd like to see them side by side and, or to at least see what's been redlined out to where we can look at that.
Yeah, I think that's fair, and we definitely want to use the use-specific standards appropriately so that where there are, for instance, heavy industrial users that may have negative impacts such as, you know, noise, vibration, odor, whatever, those things definitely need to have additional criteria. And so it's a matter of how things are mapped and making sure that in, that the districts make sense with regard to proximity to other active uses, those are that are established, for instance, maybe stable neighborhoods, and mapping those things that are not appropriate to those stable neighborhoods' existing developments appropriately, but then also ensuring that we've got a menu of standards that will make it more predictable, what people, you know, can encounter within those properties, even if the exact uses are not as, as predictable as being, you know. What I see when we talk about a variety of different commercial districts, for instance, it gets really difficult because maybe you've got a retail operation, retail store that is of a certain size, and then you change it to maybe add, you know, 5,000 square feet, it could jump and be not allowed in a particular zoning district anymore, it would have to be in a higher classification of zoning, and that's really, I mean, the use is still the same, it just happens to be bigger. And so we want to address that impact as opposed to restricting the use. That's the fine line that we're trying to-
And I understand what you're saying, but that's what I mean is that Bellavista's kind of unique in the fact that there's really, there's not a graduate, graduated, you know, spread.
Yeah.
Out from, you know, because everything is residential, you know, everything. And that's the concern that I have is that, you know, because I know that if the rules are you can't build a building 10,000 square feet or bigger, they'll build it 9,999 square feet.
Absolutely.
And I know that's the game. So, I mean, and that's what I'm kind of getting at is, that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts of what keeps neighbors happy. I mean, that's, and that's what we constantly go through is that you really start getting complaints whenever it is the potential of light pollution, noise pollution, you know, et cetera, you know, and, and to Doug's point, you know, I don't know what our, our noise ordinance is, I don't know if it reads, you know, what the decibel values are or whatever. But, it doesn't read, it reads frequency rather than like, and I don't know anything about sound, but like the bass, the bass tone.
Uh huh.
It, it doesn't measure that, it measures like the overall output of sound. And so it could be quiet, but then you hear the thud, 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 and that's what's the annoying thing. So that's what I mean, that's the only concerns I have, putting something too close to, you know, lumping everything in too close together.
Got it.
So, I just wanted to add a note, well, one, noise is in our fine, section of the ordinance outside of the zoning ordinance. The noise we will address with the use-specific standards, which is what Dawn is really trying to highlight for you guys. I think a lot of your concerns that you're kind of airing right now will be addressed with the use standards, because that can literally attack, like not attack, but it can set, set special requirements for each use, rather than limiting it to a zone and having the rezone application process more applicable to what your concern is. Instead, we can just apply the law as written under use-specific standards to that specific use that you may have a concern on. So I think whenever you do get your hand on the draft, when we do post it, I would recommend you probably focusing more on those because that's probably-
Oh, I will, and that's what I mean, I know that, I know that nothing's done, done.
No.
But that's all I was getting at, is if we can see what is being taken out or how that, how that evolution, I, I don't, that, that's what I mean, I guess I just have a lot of questions as far as what that evolution looks like.
Yeah, the challenge is they'll be showing you how things have been moved around more than what's been taken out, I think.
It has been completely stripped and rewritten.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it, it's going to be a total learning or figuring out, you know, how this is going to be.
We'll do our best to give you guys like a good way to navigate that, but it's, but yeah, it will be a real difference.
One thing I want to highlight is that the part that, what we're trying to do here is implement the master plan that you've already adopted. So, you know, when you see, you know, as a map is developed and whatnot, you know, we are basing that off of decisions that have been made and which we are following. And so, if people think it's just willy-nilly, it's not. It's based on, you know, a thorough study and things that we had, when did we do that? Two, three, at least three years ago. And so the point of this is to implement that as well. And so, some of the, I guess what I'm saying is we've made some decisions already that we, that in terms of policy, that this is intended, big picture stuff, that, that we're trying to incorporate that have not been incorporated yet. So, Chris, because we talked about it, you know, Taylor, I was talking about C1 and maybe going through the uses and seeing if we could pick a recommendation, come to city council and change it. And then that, we got in the risk of making something that's already conforming, non-conforming, and I was just like, we'll just wait, right? So, through this process, at the end of the day, I guess, whenever you do the new map, we could turn some currently conforming to non-conforming and vice versa, right?
It is possible.
And, and some of the, I'm just going to say like the KUKA properties, right, that we just zone a lot of R1 and a handful of C1, it could actually change the zoning on some of those? Yes, but, and, and this is part of our special Bellavista situation here, I've mentioned this before. There are certain properties that have the ability to be only used for residential or only used for commercial. And if we zone it in a way where no one can comply with their private requirements and meet our code, we would have regulated all the value out of that property and taken it. So we have to be very careful. If we come through an area and we say, you know, all these lots in, on this empty cul-de-sac are zoned, are, are privately restricted to residential use only through private covenants and plat restrictions, but the city comes in and says, you know, we'd like to see this be a new mid-level commercial type area and we zone it as such, they can't ever build a home on it because we've zoned it as some sort of a commercial use. And so they're going to say, my land's valueless, I can't do anything, I can't even do what you want because I'm going to get sued by all my neighbors and my, you know, developer and everyone else for violating. And so, we've got to be very careful that we don't come through and regulate them out of value total. It doesn't mean, it's not, it means we regulate them into being unable to do anything, is what I mean when I say that. So there are practical restrictions on what we do. Right, and I was kind of referring to some of the restricted properties that haven't really been platted and- Or so-called reserved properties that are not in the Bellavista POA but were held by the developer in reserve.
Yeah.
Which are owned by whomever. Well, those are, those would be, we would actually have more say-so in those areas if they're not plat restricted.
I see many layers to this mapping effort.
Complicated, for sure.
Yeah.
I appreciate what you're doing, I do. We needed it done badly, so, you know, we're moving down the spectrum here, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this is moving things organizationally into a more user-friendly, administrable type of document in addition to modernizing and kind of bringing things into the 2020s.
I think the council knows that question.
Yes, sir.
Ago you made a statement about the state and single-family residents, would you expand on that?
So, the state has passed legislation that restricts municipalities from regulating aesthetics.
For houses.
For single-family homes. So you're not able to say you restrict where somebody can put their garage, for instance, or where they can put their front door when it's a single-family home. Now, anything other than a single-family home, you have the ability as a municipality to place some restrictions and aesthetic requirements on those types of developments.
So, what about the ACC regulations?
That's French.
They're separate. They can, that, those are private agreements that people enter into willingly when they purchase property with those conditions, so they can, they can agree to do those.
Strictly a prohibition on the city.
Correct.
The laws for those follow the municipalities in Arkansas State statutes.
Some of your new interpretations, there's houses that don't, or will not comply with the new stuff, how it was at the Senate today, I didn't get a whole lot of detail, but there's a bunch of places out there that just plain don't comply. Are they going to be grandfathered in or will they gradually have to, depending on the situation, comply?
Let me, let me take a stab at that first, but that's, that's a situation where we will be creating pre-existing non-conforming uses.
Right.
So they pre-existed the change to the law, and they continue to be legal, you can continue to use them. We will have certain standards in the code that say, you may even be able to do- even be able to do some, or some fixing to it, but there's going to be a limit to what you can do in terms of changing that to where you'd have to comply with the new requirements. So then that's a, that's a situation where someone must come in and redevelop or build a new house, I mean, depends on what we're talking about, of course, but the pre-existing non-conforming uses are.
You know, of course, there's a bunch of houses that really don't fit wherever they stuck them. But go back to the pickleball thing, you know, we, we approved it and everything else, but I've seen pictures in the dark, when they're playing with the lights on, it definitely affects the neighbors, big time. And the guy who owns the property said that when they're playing at night, it doesn't even come anywhere near the noise ordinance either.
Well, you know, one thing I would like to make sure people know, because we, you all get calls on this stuff all the time, is, and I, if, when people say, my neighbor's doing something to me, my house is now not worth anything, I can't stand to live, and you're telling me there's not an ordinance that keeps them from doing it. Well, unfortunately, sometimes there may be an ordinance that keeps them from doing it. Those people have absolutely a remedy to go to court, to sue them, to stop it, they have all kinds of things they can do, just because it may not be an ordinance. And people think that they have to come to us, and that's all they can do. It is not, there is a whole group of nuisance laws out there. So if somebody's running shining lights and running pickleball tournaments until 2:00 in the morning, and it's not technically violating our noise ordinance or zoning or anything else, look out, because they could get sued.
Who's got the kind of money to fight that it is?
People that own, single-family, owns nice neighborhoods, people that own real estate, dude. That's, I mean, we're not talking about best of two people. We're talking about people with assets. Just to be blunt, you know, they got it. So, some of them may not. There may be tenants, there may be tenants, but anyway.
That's one thing that people do not want to do, is seek legal remedies, I mean, that's just.
It's hard. It's easy to, I mean, it's not easy to, and then soon your neighbor, they're still looking at you, and it's not an easy thing to do. I'm not saying it's easy, but they have a remedy, they're not without it.
Can my big brother do it for me?
Well, I can't speak to what the motivation is. But I know, it seems like if we can't tell them we can do something, they just have no hope. And I just want to make sure that people understand that, that they do have some hope.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
I'll ask one. I'm still disappointed that we only have one single-family residential zone. I guess out of the 320-plus subdivisions that we have, if you look at them individually, there is a lot of variation in those 320 by a fair margin. And it would seem that it would be appropriate to classify those into some different classifications for a single-family residential, only because of the character of those areas. And they can be upgraded in some cases, but maybe not because of the lot size or other constraints, older, older areas versus newer areas. But when you look at the 38,000 lots that we have, there's quite a variation in housing style. And my, my point being is that for development purposes, someone may want to come in and create a special niche that's not a multifamily setting, which is like the Owl program that one of our local residents has proposed, but still allows for some character to be created in that development.
So there are some avenues to accomplish that, and you'll see on the proposed or applicable column here, residential estate, low-density residential, moderate-density residential, and mixed residential are all residential zoning districts that are proposed. Some of them do combine, some previously or some existing residential districts, but we are proposing to retain a variety of different residential districts that can address the character and density of different developments that are even strictly residential. Also, I'm sorry.
So you're saying R1 is going to be divided into different components?
So low-density residential R1 is a one-to-one match. So you currently have residential single-family R1, we're proposing just to rename it low-density residential and retain it.
So you're not adding any classifications to more characterize the existing, but allowing for development of those as well?
We also, of course, are retaining the planned zoning district option, and we're looking at some ways to lessen the burden of utilizing that. It's pretty restrictive right now. A lot of engineering and design has to go into the very front end of a planned zoning district. But we're also wanting to make that a more usable tool when conditions meet those types of standards. The planned zoning district is really intended to be something that doesn't fit any of the other zoning districts, that's unique and needs kind of some special touch. But those, yes, we are proposing to retain a menu of different residential districts that will allow for, you know, variety within your housing types, price points, sizes of structures, that type of thing.
So as an example, R1 will have different categories within R1? So you can have R1A, R1B, R1C, R1D?
No, we're proposing that it strictly be an R1 zoning district. Now, there could be, you know, infill criteria that would be applicable in certain circumstances, but for the most part, that is where you will see the majority of your single-family residential development. As the lot sizes get smaller, then we would probably look at utilizing the R2, where you can also have single-family properties, but in, in with that, you may also start to see some duplexes or townhomes.
As lot sizes get smaller, you're not looking at increasing the density?
Yeah, the density typically does go up when lot sizes get smaller.
Well, I'm speaking from the perspective of having the unisexual exposure system capable in.
Yes, well, we recognize that that is definitely a limiting factor. But we do want to, I mean, understanding that people are going to be guided by what their septic systems can support is important, but I think for big-picture purposes, we want to try and look at the zoning, both the regulatory narrative, but also the map in a way that speaks to what happens in the future state. Maybe we get to a point that sewer is more accessible. And if that is the case, and it begins to be extended, then we don't necessarily want everything to kind of not work with regard to the regulatory structure that's in place for reasonable growth and development within the city. So we want it to be more based upon what, what's appropriate with regard to adjacencies and how you want growth to occur. And then, of course, there may be some decisions that have to be made in order for the utility systems to support that type of growth in the growth patterns that are identified.
Next?
Sure. Okay. We will, we will carry on, and Taylor will probably keep you updated better than we can, but we're excited that we've gotten to this point. We really appreciate the input that we've received so far, status being fabulous, and we will have this information as soon as it's ready, available to you guys. So we'd like to keep on with your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is youth council meet and greet, sandwich supper, and I believe that's by Craig Council, council member Craig Council.
The youth council meet and greet will be September 23rd at 5:00 in this room prior to city council. So at that time, were we going to announce all the members tonight?
We could.
Did you want to do that tonight or no?
Announce the members we have so far signed up. Sure, go ahead.
Okay. And first, let me, I want to thank Wanda, she has been working nonstop on this thing, and then Wendy and Cassie, everybody that's really in the mayor, has contributed a lot. There's been a lot of work that's gone into, I don't want to say vetting the applicants, but it's amazing to see what some of these kids are capable of at their age, and my glory, I'll tell you the truth. And we'll get into all that stuff later. But I'll go ahead and announce the kids that we have so far, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize, I'm on camera. Claire Cockrell, Cornerstone Academy, she's an 11th grader. Emma Ponov, I'm guessing P-A-U-N-O-V, Bentonville High School, she's an 11th grader. Evelyn Clark, she's a Bentonville High Schooler, 11th grade. Jonathan Underwood, Bentonville High School, 11th grade. Peyton Bryant, Bentonville High School, 11th grade. Wallace Long, Bentonville High School, 11th grade. And then William Lim, Bentonville High School, 11th grade. But I'm really excited. I mean, this is going to be the kickoff of something that I think is, I hope is going to be a longstanding cornerstone of our community. I think the kids' involvement, it's, I, I think it's going to give kids a pivotal point in their lives, better understanding of how the government works and works for them. So I'm really excited. Thanks for everything. Yes?
My question is, I'm disappointed that we have no one from the Granite School District
here, which represents probably the western.
Every school is getting the same information, so.
Just disappointed that they're not, but when you look at it from other perspectives,
Well, I think once we get through this year, and I think once word of mouth and it actually becomes a known entity, yeah, functioning entity in the community, I think word of mouth is going to, you know, get things going, is my hope. I think that's kind of what I'm planning on.
Yeah, I believe we still have till August 31st, people to apply.
We have a few more applicants who want to do it, so there's two more.
Yeah, we hope to get a few more.
And they're exciting. Hope they do. Are we all allowed or invited to attend the supper, or is that just for?
That's why it's in, it's for council members, it's for council members.
Yeah.
And it's ready to.
I'm so excited.
And the little, the sandwich supper in this room, she's reserved this room for us, and then go to the courtroom for the regular session.
Yeah, I think this is the one, one meeting they have where they're going to see council, isn't it? They're doing something different every month.
Yep.
Okay, next item is financial projections through 2027 by Doug Fowler.
Have not looked this up, so we're going to see if this works. What about those combination keys I have to look? I think they do something on the wall over there. Yeah, it's not. Okay.
We're going to need a minute to get him on screen being.
You know what?
I can do it, we can do it, it'll take a little bit.
How long's it take?
Five, five minutes, maybe, three minutes?
That's good.
Should we do it? Is there something else we can attack before then?
Not really.
Okay.
Let's put it, let's put it out so people can see it.
Actually, we have something we can talk about if you'd like.
Yes.
With the storm debris.
Oh, sure, come on up.
Would you like us to go in and address that?
Sure, come on.
As long as you don't do next week's presentation.
No, this is going to be on our storm debris, so we had a severe thunderstorm come around Friday night. It affected the western part of Belavista primarily, some in the south central. There was lots of downed trees, wrapped up in power lines and tangled, so we've been out there working on those, my voice is off, clear enough. We are going to do a city pickup from at the west side of 71, and there's a few rules to it at this point. I'll just go through them in case people are listening. It's for the trees and the limbs, we're not accepting stumps, root balls, construction materials, household trash, or other non-woody debris. We ask that the material be placed within 10 foot of the edge of the road, which is the city rideaway parallel to the road. Debris cannot be in containers such as bags or trash cans, and limbs should be cut to less than 10 foot in length and stacked on, with the larger ends on the same side of the pot. We're also asking residents to please not block any of the drainage ditches, driveway culverts, anything that can prevent maybe some flooding issues in the future. We are working on a plan to address the cleanup. We have worked with the P O A to find a place where we could stage the materials until we can hire a chipping company. We are looking at a couple different companies for grinding possibilities, kind of similar for those who were in here in 2019. Excuse me, my voice is off today. And we're probably going to come and ask for some funding to fund that portion of it. There's two companies right now on the table who are willing to help. We'll get the details from the one this week, and the other one's kind of given us a rough estimate so far on what they can do. They're able to mobilize as early as the week of September the 9th. I'm not sure that our department will be ready at that point, because we're right in the middle of our resurfacing and a few other things that would limit the amount of people we can have picking up and hauling that debris. Am I missing anything?
No.
So it will be a slow roll getting started. Residents can rest assured that we will be coming by and doing that pickup. It's going to take a little time to kind of coordinate. Dan had driven some of the roads himself, and on the west side.
I drove all streets on W1 zone, which is the southern half of the Highlands, or W2, which is the southern half of Highlands, Highlands Boulevard, Evington, Kedros, Perth, everything on that half. And there was maybe a handful or two of streets that did not have any immediate debris noticeable, other than that, pretty much every street. So it's not expected to be the same volume as the 2019 storm, however, we do expect it's probably going to encroach on that threshold where we need council approval to get this done. So we're going to try to bring that next week.
Our primary focus has been just opening the roadways, at least one lane passable for every road. And today, we've been focused on pushing it back a little further to get both lanes open, but it's going to be a tedious and long project.
What do you expect to have for next week? Because we don't have any, we're going to have a resolution on ordinance or?
I'm going to talk to you about it. I'm thinking we're going to need an ordinance so that we could waive a formal bidding in turn to a contract with the grinding company. I've got all the notes here to talk to you about it after the meeting. That would be my opinion, since we're going to have to get this ball rolling before the next city council meeting.
There's a lot of free labor in the jail, all you got to do is feed it and watch it, and it will come out.
We'll see.
We've still got quite a bit of dangerous work to do.
When you get it from the curb to the truck, and if there's stuff in the road, that's city stuff.
We'll be using heavy equipment, there's lots of large trees.
Okay, I just offered.
That's what I was going to say. Scottsdale was totally blocked, and you guys had it cleared out in like three hours.
I appreciate it, that might be why I don't have a voice.
Larry, we also think it's a question.
Yes, sir.
My question is, was there enough damage in Benton County for the county?
Emergency.
Emergency government to declare, get some reimbursement funding for it?
Chief Sins knows a little bit more on that.
As of right now, no. I have the county out here, a D M out here looking at our assessment, assess our damage, and as of right now, there's no, there'll be no funding as of right now.
Not sufficient in.
That's correct.
In the county itself to.
That's right. What the government had declared was waiving rights, D O T rights. What the government had declared was waiving rights, DOT rights, for time on the truck and, and weight limit restrictions. That's what the declaration was currently.
Well, thanks very much, I appreciate it. And the voice thing, that's what happens when you work all night.
Yeah, I'm still catching it, honestly, thank you.
Thank you for your effort.
I do wanna make a statement, they've been working around the clock since this happened. And Karen's getting phone calls at home on her cellphone, because the phones are down for the city. And people are showing up at the, at the street department, because they can't get through the phones. And we, so, I mean, they have done a heroic job here, and I've, they've gone, you know, they've been amazing. So, you know, I know they don't get, they don't get donations, we've talked about this, they don't get donations like police and fire, but my God, they deserve it. Thank you very much.
There's a security breach, gonna have anything to do with
I don't have any information. Yeah, the IT folks are working on it. I don't have that kind of specific information at this point.
Okay, guys, I apologize, everybody, and you know what? The plan wasn't really to make a presentation out of this anyway, it was kind of conversation between the city council. But because we had more people, which we probably should have anticipated since it's election season, should have tried to put the laptop up first. So this is, and, and I've got a disclaimer written down on the, the front page, I'll just let you know. Now I'm just gonna kind of talk to council, and you guys can listen. This is not really gonna take very long. Says this exercise is done by Doug Fowler, for Doug Fowler, and is directional in its intent. It's being shared with the balance of the council as an FYI only, okay? So last year during the budgeting process, which we held over at City Hall, as we were going through everything, I was just kind of looking at multiple reports, and had some concerns, you know, looking forward. Not immediate necessarily, but looking forward over the next two or three years. And, you know, one, a one-year shot's maybe, maybe it's not a big deal, but again, we're looking into the future. You know, our police and our fire salaries had gone up, you know, kind of exponentially over two years. And you know what, this is not a knock on anybody, it's just, it's just kind of like a sign of the times. You know, our, our forces are getting larger, we have more, more, more people. So over two years, I think the fire department went up like an 800 or 900,000 dollars, the police department went up 700 or 800,000 dollars over a two-year period, right? And then I'm looking at the fact that we have like 24 million dollars of capital projects on the board for the next four years through the year 2027. We had like almost 12 million dollars of capital projects on the board for this year alone, okay? So in addition to our, our budget, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, for, for salary, benefit, and operational expenses, we're looking at adding like about 12 million dollars onto that, right? Well, our revenue comes in pretty strong for the city. In the last year or two, I believe our revenue has come in about 4 million dollars, give or take, over what our salary, benefits, and operational expenses have been, right? So that's pretty healthy, but we've also had, you know, some good capital expenses as well. Well, in past history, and I don't really wanna speak to it a lot, we're talking to Kim and John today, our capital expenses would have appeared to put us behind our revenue for four of the past five years. However, because the state allocated funds for the Mercy Way Bridge, the Walton family stepped up and helped cover some additional costs on that for the pedestrian walkway. We had received COVID funds, you know, from the federal government. So it helped us pay for, you know, most, if not all, of those capital projects. And it also helped us kind of pad our unassigned fund balance that we had, and we kind of call our reserve funds, if you will. But, but having, you know, looked at everything and looking at our budget, knowing we had all these capital expenses out there, I was concerned. So just for me, so I could sleep a little better, I wanted to do an exercise and kind of project forward on where I think we might go. And there are projections on, that's all you can do, right? So in this handy-dandy little blue folder right here, I have the year-ending financial reports back to like 2017, from when I first started. So I'm able to track revenue by line, I'm able, able to track expenses by department, you know, for all the way from 2017 to all the way through 2023. So what I did, and I'm just kind of talking to you guys through this, you're not gonna see the numbers. I took the latest, the most recent three years, I compared 23 to 22, and 22 to 21. And basically what I did is I averaged those two years, because I didn't use like 2020, because that was a COVID year, it was an odd year, it just wasn't a good year to use. So I used the average, you know, of those two time periods, and essentially what I did is I just projected it forward through 2027. Because it gives us a pretty good idea, you know, of our expenditures and our revenue. Exact, no, it's not gonna be exact, because things change. We have done these exercises in the past, I know that Carrie used to do them, and Kim, I know you do them too. We'd share them with the council. If I go back and look at those projections and see how they actually played out, well, things change in everyone, and they're gonna change in this right here. But still, just for my own personal benefit, I felt a real need to have a handle on it, right? So having projected revenue, having projected expenses, again, in, for, for salary, benefits, and operational expenses. And what I did is I have a page for revenue that had tracks back to 2017 forward. So here are my numbers here, down below, you have the percent changes year over year for revenue. I have a page for salary, I have a page for benefits, and I have a page for operational expenses, okay? So I took those and I just rolled them up to a top line. And where I wanted, where I went with this, where I wanted to go with this is, because I thought we were gonna start being, I thought we were gonna have higher expenses versus our revenue intake, like within a year or two, okay? As it turns out, projected, we're probably not gonna be as, as in dire straits as I thought we were gonna be. But we're definitely gonna be getting into our reserves to help pay our expenses, more than likely, okay? So I'm not gonna take, well, okay, I'll do, I'll do it like this. The estimate for 2024, again, I've said it several times already, payroll, operational benefit, and our capital expenditures, which were projected to be 11,223,000 dollars for this year, we would be, versus the revenue projected that we are going to realize this year, we'd be about 7.1 million dollars in arrears, okay? In 2025, that estimate will be 2.2 million dollars in arrears. Okay, I'm sorry, I looked at the last page, the last page, page seven, okay? I'm just, I'm just cutting to the bottom line, because we can't see it up here anyway. In 2026, we'd be 370,000 dollars in arrears. And in '27, we would be 950,000 dollars in arrears, okay? So added together for those four years, that's, that's a negative 10.6 million dollars, okay, 10.7 million dollars. We have, right now, in the kitty, available unassigned funds of 12.2 million dollars, okay? So we would have to, we'd have to utilize that to pay that negative 10.7 million dollars. That would leave us with 1.6 million dollars in unassigned funds and reserves, okay? So we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be in the hole, right, but we're scaring. We just hired, or we're gonna hire, I don't know if we've done it yet, two police officers and two people in CES, okay? We're paying half of their salaries in 2024, and then we pay their full salaries starting in 2025, right? So I took those two positions in those two departments, put half of their costs in 2024, and their full costs in 2025. I broke it out, a ratio, you know, a ratio of benefits to, benefit and salaries. I broke it out like that, so I could put the numbers in salary and benefits. But when you blow that out in 2027, before I did that, it was like, we would have like 3.6 million dollars. So we're talking adding four people would affect our bottom line by about 2 million dollars over four years, okay? That's how quickly things add up. And people that are sitting on this council right now, we've, we've been really good to the city, okay? Everything that has been proposed, that has not been in the budget, like for 2024, or even back in 2023, we've approved it, okay? And the only reason I'm doing this, I'm just, I'm just sharing it, that's all. And each one of you guys, each one of you people, council members can do whatever you wanna do with it. I would be more than happy to share my Excel workbook, you know? And you could work with it and play with it yourself, and maybe you come up with other projections. Now, I will also say, just so you know, I mean, we all stayed pretty close to this stuff, right? And Kim just sent out our June financial report, right? Well, county, city and county taxes drive our revenue. Now our, uh, how was the brief? Our city housing.
Property taxes.
Property taxes. That's, that's also a large number, okay? And I feel pretty good about that. But we're six months into the year, and it's really projected on the numbers that I have right here, and I think the city projected as well. The city sales tax would be up 7%. Well, the county was projected
We projected county up.
I know, but I'm getting there, I'm talking about the city first. The city was projected to be up about 7%, and it is. But the county was, it's not quite triple our number, but it's probably, probably two and a half times our number, contribution to our rev, our, our, our city revenue, right? It is flat right now. Bentonville and Rogers are both struggling with their city sales taxes, which goes into the Benton County copper, right? So we're flat on county taxes year-to-date. If we stay flat the rest of the year, that's like a 700,000 dollar hit to our revenue bottom line. So even though I've got 1.6 here, if we're flat the rest of the year, and we redo the numbers, now we're at 900,000 dollars we might have left in unassigned funds, okay? And we know that as we're sitting here, there are gonna be other dynamics that will come into play. But at least this gives me something to start from, to understand every time we do something, what it could potentially mean to us, and on our revenue. And I, I said this out loud before, I don't wanna be on the Bellevista City Council when we're spending our city into the red, okay? And it was bothering me, and that's why I did this. Again, this is for me personally, but I'm just sharing it with everybody as a heads up. And if you guys or somebody thinks you can do projections a better way, have at it, I'm all for that, I'll look at anybody's numbers, it's, it's fine with me. So it's directional in nature, that's what it is, and things are gonna change.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
That 12.2 million available unassigned funds, based on your calculation, is that including the necessary reserves?
No.
We have to keep, so this is, this isn't the total amount of money we've got left, because we've got a whole pile we've gotta keep.
Well, we've got, we actually have like 75 in unassigned funds total, but we're required to keep 25% of that for emergencies.
We're required to keep 25% of the next year's revenues.
So as revenue grows, so does that reserve. Just, you know, I don't, I don't know if you
Well, by required, that's a self-infused requirement.
Correct.
We voted to put that
We really wanna have 1.4 million, we'll have 1.4 million plus what, 3 or 4 million?
We, and we haven't ever defined emergency, but I took that out, because that's for an emergency, whatever that is, okay? It's not defined, so, but, but we don't count it, right? It's the 12.282 million is what we look at as far as unassigned funds sitting in the kitty. So that's what this is, I could have kind of shown the numbers up here, but you guys get it, right? So if anybody has any questions, but I just mentioned two things, since I did it the first time. Forehead count, county sales tax flat. Well, it just, everything is eaten into our financial picture looking forward, okay? So, and I don't even know, man, I don't, well, and two, just so you'll know, we, the fire truck, what was that, 1.5? 1.3 million? If we would have went ahead and paid cash on that, which we didn't, we financed it, actually making a little bit of money on the financing, that would have been taken out of here, so that saves some money. Well, right now, we're trying to figure out, you know, on the fire station, rather than go ahead and pay for it out of, out of our unassigned funds, you know, we may finance that instead and hold on to that cash. We have fire station number five we're looking at in a couple of years. Well, I'm just kind of like putting, going to put this out there, maybe I shouldn't, but we've got a bond going right now. And we're, we're spending that bond, and we're paying that bond off very rapidly, much quicker than we thought we would. So maybe we go to the voters, and we ask for an extension of that bond to pay for fire station number five. And, and, and the residents of their city, of our city are very amenable to something like that, right? If they know you're spending their money effectively, and it's for the benefit of the city, the residents, I would say that they would probably be favorable to it. So it just helps us look at things like that and decide if we need to make some changes, you know? I'd rather live on other people's money, personally. So I would imagine we'll probably finance some money, and we, I don't know if we'll go for a bond extension or not, I don't know. This is the mayor over here, and that will ultimately be his decision, but it's, it's a direction we could go. But if we don't make any of those moves, if we don't make any of those changes, this is kind of the picture we're, we're looking at. And I ended up having to print these on my printer today, because our printers were down at the offices. So I only have, I think, like 12 or 13 copies for anybody that might like it. If you wanna give me your email address, anybody in here, you're gonna email it to you, I'd be more than happy to do it, it's nothing secret. And by the way, you get to do FOIA anyway if you really wanted. But again, it's, it's directional in nature, okay? That's what it is.
Full disclosure, I jokingly told him to make 30 copies when he asked me. Larry, did you have something?
Does anybody have any kind of projection or idea as to what, what kind of a hit we would take on sales tax revenue if building construction were to decline considerably?
We, we don't, I don't know that we have a lot
Do we have a line item for that, Kim?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear what he was asking.
He was asking what kind of hit it would be to sales tax if a building construction slowed down quite a bit?
We, we talked about this once in passing, the way, the way these codes work, well, we've talked about it a couple times, the way the codes work that tells us where our revenues, our sales tax revenue is coming from, is very difficult. But my estimation would be, we would take, when we, when I did it the first time, would take at least a 30% hit. It would be bad, it would be bad. Yeah. Now, keep in mind, when we did this analysis, it's very, very difficult, based on the information provided by the state, to know that where the source of your revenue is. It's very, the codes are very complicated, and they're not well-defined, so it's very hard to know all the different codes that make up our construction sales tax. But when I looked at it, this is about two years ago, because this was a concern I had, I calculated about 30%. If, if construction stops tomorrow in the city, that's what I would expect to see.
30% reduction in sales tax?
That would be my, my, again, this is two years old.
Zero construction.
It was zero construction. That was my, that was my original, original, based on the codes as I read them. Again, this is why we stopped doing that report. The, the codes are horrible, and the state refuses to allow us to see what the vendor is paying that sales tax. The state refuses. In, in other states, I can get that, but in Arkansas, that information is not available to us. We can't be trusted with it, apparently. Other states, you can trust your cities with it, but not here. So, no, you know, if somebody wants to pick up a, a flag to bear and walk down to the state camp, well, I am right behind you on that one. Anyway, so it's hard to know, this is why I'm saying it was a guesstimate, right? It's hard to know what the, what the vendor is that's paying that sales tax in a particular category. But that was my original guess, was about 30%.
Larry?
So the sales tax that we get for construction
So the sales tax that we get for construction is really on any products, if they are delivered in Bella Vista, we are supposedly eligible to get sales tax.
Yes.
If it's picked up at the store and not delivered by the enterprise that we're getting it from.
Right.
We don't get the sales tax.
Correct. So everybody that drives down to Lowe's, we don't get any sales tax from that, except we get the county sales tax. We get our portion of the county sales tax on that. But we don't get a, you know, we don't get a city sales tax on that.
But if Lowe's delivers to Bella Vista?
Well, so, you know, I asked...
They're supposed to get a part of that.
I asked that question, and it has to do with how it's rung up in the system and how the, because I could not get, I, I said, but everybody who orders that does construction orders in Bella Vista, please tell me we're getting those city sales tax.
Or the order where it's delivered.
Yes.
Lowe's delivers it.
You order at the store and...
I know where they deliver it.
They're supposed to do that, but I cannot, I cannot swear that they're doing that.
But it may not be rung up that way after cash register.
It, it has to do with how they read it up and how their system works.
Well, I keep hearing that there are like four or five major contractors that have been building in Bella Vista are not, not going to build in Bella Vista anymore because it takes too long to get a building permit. Take anywhere from six to seven months to get a building permit. Is that right?
I wouldn't say six to seven months. It takes a couple of months to, to get the approval from ADAs. And I guess maybe Taylor could give a more accurate answer. I know they're a little behind the GECs now.
So has there been some changes in management at community development?
We're working on cutting that time down on the GECs. One of the problems is our engineers working very hard, and actually, we've been attempting to hire a new, an additional civil engineer, and that's not so easy. We did recently get a new planner who's going to start, but we have not been successful getting a new civil engineer yet.
You were hiring a technician or a junior engineer to work under our city engineer? Is that the idea?
No, we were going to hire a young engineer.
Yeah.
That was the plan, was to hire someone who didn't have a P E yet so they could work in a credit and handle the single-family business.
We were discussing changing that to the engineering system, find somebody with civil engineering.
Well, I asked about are there any management changes because I, I reached out to Doug for a, an answer on a question, and one too long after that, I get a text from Ms. Robinson saying that if I have any future questions to contact her. Then I hear that she is reporting directly to you now.
That's correct. Taylor Robertson reports directly to me, yeah. Planning is a division of CDS. That's the way we're set up now.
Oh, it's a planning, it's a division.
Yeah. It's not a department like community development is.
One of the things that hurts Bella Vista is that we don't have the sales tax generation here because we don't have the type of businesses. As example, in Centerton, they've grown hugely in the commercial area. Commercial area is a wide spectrum of things. It's food service and hardware stores and a bunch of other things. But all of those things generate sales tax. It's been, I understood it to be that a number of years ago, this may go back 10 years with the data, but Bentonville was taking in about $750,000 a month in sales tax. And Rogers, because of Pinnacle, was taking in like a million dollars. Now, these are old numbers, but those are huge dollars every month, which supplements and complements your budget and other streams of revenue. And in addition to those dollars increase, they get shares from the county like we do. So we're disadvantaged here in not having that level of commercial business establishments generating sales tax. Not an easy thing to change because much of our land that's vacant for commercial is owned by, by third parties, and much of it is by a single third party. It may be split now a little bit, but nonetheless, the value of that land has been a factor, I believe, in my humble opinion. The value placed on that land for development has been not in proportion with the marketability of it in terms of generating revenue there. And so, and I guess what I'm saying is that the land prices have been over and above what the setting for the property would typically generate in any municipal setting. And so that's a handicap to us, and we have no control of that.
Does anybody have any idea how much difference there is in commercial property price in Centerton compared to Bella Vista?
Well, I can tell you what it was in 2011 is that commercial property here was going for like $130,000 an acre. And, and even in areas with good transportation linkage, it was not the population, the population to support a business was not there in the immediate area of that commercial dictates. For example, Starbucks will locate 99% of their stores at only an intersection with a stop and go light. Stop and go light has to be a part of the criteria. And so you'll notice that Starbucks on 71, they were going to locate across the street where the new building next to Cray, Cray Lake Realty was. That building there, there was a rumor that Starbucks was going to locate in that building. But that didn't happen because it didn't meet the criteria at an intersection with a stop and go signal at the intersection that you're on. And if you look at Starbucks restaurant or Starbucks coffee shops, almost all of them will be at an intersection with a stop and go light at.
So thank you for that insight. I do think our sales tax is, that's a good point. Construction certainly has been a driver in this area for a while now. I do think that our sales tax, city sales tax is, as you, people can see, there's some plans in the offing that appear that it's going to increase it. Just very recently, things that happened, they opened a new bakery and coffee shop near where CDS is located. Rosita's opened next to the history museum, and I believe they're positioned to perhaps be more successful than earlier restaurant efforts because they're experienced at it. And on September 12, POA's opening BV 65 at Kingsdale, and I believe that's going to be a successful venture. So we do have things happening. I think we're headed in a modest but a positive direction.
Yeah, things will happen when, when purchases are just taking place in this country in the future for that essence of that.
One last question, and it's a question for you, Kim. If you look at the Carroll Electric Light bill, there's a line item that says municipal tax, and there's a number on it, and then there's a number down below that says city tax. Is there a differential between those two?
You can answer that. One is the sales tax and one is the franchise fee.
So the municipal tax must be the franchise fee.
One or the other. I'd have to look at it. I think so. That's the four and a quarter percent that is franchise fee.
Municipal taxes is the one down at the very bottom.
No, it's not. It's, it's the top of the list.
Okay. Then that is the franchise fee. The one at the bottom is the sales tax, if that's, if that's where you're going.
So Carroll Electric's sales tax is broken out where everybody else has been from.
It's included. It's included.
They include all the sales tax in one line. And the franchise fee is separate.
Yeah.
Two looks.
Yeah. Jim?
Moving to a journey.
That's a good idea. I did want to mention next week, obviously, we are apparently going to have one thing on the ballot, and we were going to have a presentation by the streets department and a presentation by the fire chief about the status of the various construction projects and just kind of bring up the speed on that, so.
At the city council?
Yeah. That'll be the city council meeting. Both, it'll be the city council meeting next week.
Looks like there's some new speed work, don't you think?
It looks good. So excited. Two reports next week. Two reports next week?
Uh, three, counting the financial. We'll go over the June 30 financials also. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Good work, sir.